Good afternoon and welcome to a joint meeting with the Colonial Beach Town Council, Colonial Beach School Board. I'd like to open the order call to order the Colonial Beach Town Council side of the meeting, and I'd like to recognize the Chairman of the School Board, Tim Trivitt. You would open your side as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll call the school board meeting to order, and I'll just note that we only have four members at this time. One, his resignation was effective on Monday, May August the 13th. Ms. Laburn is out of town, but she is actually on the phone. We phoned her in just so she could listen to the meeting.
Okay.
So we do have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Trivitt. I'd like to thank the school board and their willingness to meet with us and just make a basic announcement of the purpose of the meeting. A couple items we wanted to talk about was school-town relationships, fiscal '17 school operating fund balance, elementary school project closeout, and the Torrey Smith work tower field property. At this time, I'd like to ask the town manager if he would introduce each other.
Mr. Mayor, as Kurt mentioned, correspondingly, Kurt, over the last month, we're going to address these four topics. I know that there's a lot of history with some of the length and breadth of some of the things, everything that we're looking at. Just to give the background, when I took over back in February, we were going through a lot of financial auditing type processes for our coming year budget. And we looked at the town as well as the school, and to get a good grip financially, what was going on. So these are topics that either the auditor came to us with, or they're topics that we know that are kind of outlined, and I would like to take the school board's hand and make it for this conversation. And without further ado, the first one that was discussed now, Mr. Trivitt mentioned it in our last meeting, is that there's a certain level of autonomy inside of the school-town relationship, and that's very true. That's accurate, accurate to a point, but I thought it would be for the good of the order if we talked about where that autonomy begins and where it is. And after doing research and being with the town attorney, and everything that I'm looking at is through the prism of the finance. So that's the look that I'm looking at, is that we, from a financial point of view, look into the school all the way down to a categorical funding level, and that's where we stop. And that's where we stop. Anything past that is certainly not smart because of the town and its finances, and we just wanted to solidify that everybody who was under the understanding that that's where the autonomy begins and where we no longer look at further depth. But from a category, because we fund our category, that's about as far as we go. Your thoughts?
Convergent.
Okay, that's fantastic. And it does also just go for the general public, and also for everyone in the team that just understands. The next topic is fiscal '17 school operating fund balance. As we were going over fiscal year '17, and things closed back in February of last year, Mrs. Gunn has found that it looked like the school had diverted out money, that there was about $300,000 that was not spent. And typically, the way it operates is the school can't carry over a budget into the next year unless they officially request for those said monies to go over. I did research, I didn't find any requests for that, and the auditors pointed it out as well to the Southern Atlantic audit back in the May-June timeframe. So I wanted to bring that topic up for us to discuss.
I'm just not sure where that number came from, because if they're saying we have $300,000 left over, I'm not aware of that. I don't think any of us are.
What they're saying is that in your financial statements, you have a fund balance of, again, the $300,000 range. And it's in your financials, I did provide a summary so you can take a look at it. Normally, my experience has been that unspent monies are returned to the, like in counties, they get returned to the counties. County of Beach is one of two entities that has a school system, so if it does enhance that, monies revert to the overriding body, like in this case, it would be the town council. And then school systems do at times request and say, you know, we were good stewards, we didn't use all of our budget for this year for a variety of reasons, we have this left over, it's sitting there in fund balance, we'd like it to be added to the next. There are, there's, there's usually for construction, physical tech classes, sometimes it's also used for textbook purchases. You don't get all of the enclosures in by June 30th, because textbooks are a long work range. So it is possible, but it has to be requested, so the monies come back, and then they get requested, and they can be then potentially reappropriated by the town council. So I've been involved with the town since '13, and I've had this conversation with part of leadership, and they said, we've never done it that way. And I said, my experience is that that's how school boards function, school districts function. And I just, you know, I was just, you know, prior to being an interim CFO, I was basically an extra set of hands in the finance department to help with audit prep. But, you know, I needed to keep pointing that out, and your new auditor, Robinson Farmer-Cox, when he came in at interim, they did ask that, because, you know, since they're going to have to audit at year end, they said, we never see that. You know, if it were to us, we were to audit it, we would propose, you know, having it revert back to the town council, and then have it potentially be an overdue too. So, you know, we're trying to get ahead of it, it's audit prep, don't want any surprises at year-end field work. If we raise it, then if there is any adjustment, we get credit for it. You know what I'm saying, in the sense that it's not an audit adjustment, it's a finance adjustment. I'd rather have us, you know, we may not finalize it, but at least we raise it to the auditors, and it doesn't, we don't get deemed as an audit adjustment. And underwriters and, you know, other folks that are looking at the financials would look to see how many audit adjustments we have. I always try and get zero audit adjustments, that should be the goal, and this would be one that is on our radar, and if we can address it beforehand, certainly have a strategy to present to the auditors as to how to address it, and then have a final resolution during the audit process.
So if I could just clarify something that you said, so I would clearly understand, you said you've been involved with the town finances since 2013?
I've been helping with audit prep.
And how have you been doing that, through FOLI or through auditor, or how have you been involved with that?
DML.
So, but you have identified this every year to the town council?
No, no, not the town council.
Oh, I thought you said you'd identified it in that we were over.
Management. I spoke to the treasurer and the town manager at the time. And the accounting managers also, we would try and raise it, we had to, we were to them. And we just, they felt that it was, they didn't, you know, proceed from there.
Because if it was something like that, I would wish somebody would have brought it to our attention, because every audit I've ever said, this has never been a discussion, and I've been, and I think everyone but the last one, and I, you know, I'm all about making sure that-
I'm not raising it.
-there's transparency, and we all know what's going on, and I'm a little confused by what you're saying is the only reason I'm asking you, because-
Well, I don't understand the confusion, because it was raised by the new auditor. So it has to be addressed.
But you were talking about past audits, past audits, is what I understood. You say this has been going on since 2013?
What I'm saying is I have been, no, no, I'm saying I've been involved, and whenever I saw a fund balance, I would always ask, you know, is this coming back? Because that's a typical town council-
Sure.
-year-end town finance adjustment. At the end of the year, when I would not see it, I would ask and inquire of it.
Right.
And so at that point, I had done my pejorative duty, and I left it up to management at that point, whether they raised it, you guys, or not, that was not, you know, my purview. I raised it to management, who takes responsibility for the financial statements every year.
Well, and just so, and some people on the town council might already be familiar with it, but we've known about that $300-some-thousand figure that we've talked about and that the auditors addressed every year. And I know in about 2011, 12 time period, we returned large sums of money back to the town that we thought was going towards that debt. Our understanding of that debt was that before anybody here, I think, was on the council, that the school was in the process of building a wing onto the high schools and middle school, and they were instructed to go ahead with it, to do the soft costs with an engineer and all these kind of things that ended up costing a substantial amount of money. And then the town council support was withdrawn from that, so they didn't get along to do that, but they still incurred those costs, it was about $300,000, that the town ended up having to pay because it wasn't in the school budget. That was, and that was Justice Blue, and they even filed a suit against the school for a certain amount of that that wasn't paid. So that's, our understanding was that we were trying to do the right thing with having money left over during those years by giving it back to the town, then withdraw down that amount, but evidently that never happened because it never changed.
Yeah, there's two different, this is a fund balance, you're referring to is the due to the town that related to a, it wasn't a school construction fund. It gets a little bit more complicated because with the addition of the elementary school construction, a separate fund was set up. So starting with fiscal '17, you now have two construction funds, one that was sitting there dormant, that was much, I'm assuming, related to what you just described, and then we have a school construction fund that was specific to the new elementary. So there's two, the fund balance that the auditors referred to is a separate number than the due to the town, that was the $339,000, that got addressed with the town council and the school board this spring, with the transfer title to the building that the town staff currently sits in. So that due to new fund was addressed.
Okay.
This is a fund balance in the school operating account, that school operating fund as of fiscal '17. It will by default be addressed by the current auditors, and they've already looked at it and said, we were surprised to see a fund balance. So it needs to be discussed with the auditors, and I strongly recommend that both sides get ahead of it with the auditors, and have an understanding of what that fund balance is comprised of. Fund balance is like retained earnings for a corporation, so it could be that it, part of it erodes in fiscal '17, and maybe a portion of it fiscal '17, whatever the revenue minus expenditures were in every year, it builds into that fund balance. So if you have a deficit, if you have a deficiency of, in other words, if your expenditures are greater than your revenue, and they have a deficiency, and that eats into your fund balance, and sometimes creates full-on deficits, and then sometimes you have the opposite, we don't use your entire budgeted monies in the one year, and that builds a fund balance in the sense that it's unused monies that need to be, come actively originating authority. So when, for instance, I think your guys' budget is $7 million, my roughly, the total of the town is $2.2. So there are categories, and then, so within, let's say we're in, like, so within a category, let's say the education line, okay, there is federal monies, state monies, and then local monies. And local monies are commonly felt to be used last, okay? Now, so if you have monies that are not spent in any one fiscal year, you need to identify, is it a grant that was budgeted that you can get, was it federal dollars that were budgeted that didn't you get state level, you know? So currently, I, what is in the accounting system, on the BAI system, there's one account number where federal, state, and local monies are in. So when you compare a budget to actual, you know, the town finance department doesn't have that detail. It's in your RDA system. Your folks are better able to say, okay, in total, we have $100,000,000 that weren't spent, it's because of this, this, and this. It's comprised of local, federal, and state monies. And then that's how you can better understand, you know, the reverting of the money to the originating authority, and then the request for reappropriation into the next fiscal year, on top of what was approved, you know, in the springtime for that next year's budget.
So is the school's funds commingle with the town funds?
No.
They're not?
No.
There's a totally separate account for school funds?
The town and the school have pooled cash, the pooled cash.
But that's not, my understanding is that's not legal? That we're supposed to have a totally separate account that's for school funds only?
No, I've always seen pooled cash. For Mr. Sam. Pooled cash means that you have one bank account, rather than have a school bank account, and then a town bank account, and then the town could potentially have a water bank account, a sewer bank account, and then in order, you literally have different series of accounts that will come from each separate account. And so, and then you also, when the source of your money, whether it's EDI or it's a check that comes in, it gets deposited solely into those individual accounts. So when that check comes in, it's school money, that would go into that school bank account. It's very common to see pooled cash. The records do keep track of how much is in, how much cash is the school, how much is the nutrition fund, how much is, for instance, when the bond money came in, that was actually kept in a separate stand account, okay? So, and that was completely separate. Yes.
May I? Okay. Throughout the years, and now I'm going to do it in the spring, the school, at times, had money left at the end of the school year. Of course, that money reverted back to the town. From my understanding, and having now worked in a different school system, that money that is returned, that is given back to the town, or the county, or the whatever, usually goes back into the school system.
It depends, it needs to be asked. Yeah, and actually, there's been no, it's been sitting in the fund balance, so any monies that remain unspent have sat there. So that whole concept of it physically flowing back to the town has not happened.
Forever.
You know, I can only speak to the financial statements that I've looked at and reviewed, which are the Brown Edwards and the, yeah, the FOLI, yeah. And as long as Lisa Ose has been here, the county manager, you know, she's never, you know, there's never been that kind of a transaction reported, you know, in the beginning of the year.
It was something I just found out accidentally, simply because we were, I was speaking to someone on the county school board, and they had not spent over $1 million. This was like two years ago, because the high school building was in the back of Vermont, and they were reappropriated, that was on the, yes.
Reappropriated.
It had to be reappropried.
Yes.
It actually-
It has to be asked.
Yes, and there's actual, there are journal entries in the accounting records that actually track it, coming back, and then being contributed over to the, especially if it does get designated for construction, it doesn't go back into the operating fund. The operating fund, it would go into a school construction fund.
And I'm not talking about now, basically. I mean, I came here 40 years ago, and the money was always gone by the end of, our money went back, and we never saw it come back into the school system. So, and like I said, knowing about something else, I found that came through.
It has, it's been building that, if you have a fund balance in your operating fund, it means that it stayed there, it didn't get transferred back.
Okay. Thank you.
So would it usually be appropriate to have a discussion about the funds, as far as whether we need to discuss how the funds would be returned, possibly through a resolution, and potentially if they are returned back to the school division? What would the goal of the school division be for the use of the funds? Seeing, being a lucid attendee, and discussing things with staff, I know that there are certain needs that we have, and would like to address if it's possible with those funds, one being transportation, purchasing buses to transport our students, additional vehicles for the transportation of students to other localities where they receive service and things of that nature. So I just wanted to know, when is it appropriate to have that conversation, or to discuss the means and the process of returning the money to the town, but also to potentially be appropriating the funds for school goals?
We have to first do the year end accruals-
Okay.
-because there are revenue accruals, and there are expenditure accruals. Because right now, we just have a soft close, which is a cash basis, so you can look at your records and see where you're at in terms of revenue minus expenditures and against budget, and you can see where you're at, and then your director of finance can give you an idea as to what those, I would say, early September should be, the 45-day accrual period sometimes extends to 60 days. Most of the revenue comes in by 15, anything that comes in from 15 to the 30th is considered deferred revenue. But certainly, by the first week of September, you know, those accruals should be finished, and it would be a, it's subject to audit, so you could certainly have a better number to be aware of from fiscal, where you're at with fiscal '18. And wherever you're at with fiscal '18, that's either added or subtracted to your existing fund balance from fiscal '17. So you might as well look at it on a net basis, and then go from there. You could wait until the audit, and we have a final one, or you could preliminary look at that number that staff provides, and say, this is after accruals, but always knowing that it's subject to audit, and possible, there's always possibility of an audit assessment.
I got a couple questions on that. I assume most of the $100,000 that would end up in a balance would be town funds and not state or federal grant money? The idea is to spend all that now, so that anything that's left over in most cases is always going to be funds that came back from the tax bill. The way I kind of look at this is just like we look at public works, they have a bunch of finite models, they go under, and they come under that, and get carried over to next year, so they have to reapply for a budget, just like the school board does each year. And with all the funds that are left over, or the negatives that weren't left over that we had to over-appropriate for, all starts from the same pooled cash, or the same funds available. So I don't think, my feeling is, with the way that we have to account for the town overall, not the school board, public works, credit with office, building, apparently, it all has to start over, I think, to, to, to appropriate funds that are carryover from last year now, that are not necessary in the budget for this fiscal year, is not very logical.
But that's the way the school districts function.
Well, I mean, I'm asking you, that if it's supposed to come back to the town, it doesn't come back to your heart, it goes back to the school.
It comes back to the town, the school board, and superintendent director can ask.
They can agree.
Yes, and they don't ask, I've never seen words asked generically. There's always a specific, it's going to be used for this, this, and this.
My other thing, in most cases, like initially, when we had a tough budget, we were trying to give the schools, you don't know, you normally know what you're creating reserve or not before the end of the year, if we don't have a problem. So you see a reserve creating, but I think that the idea may be that through budget negotiations, while the school board's budget's being approved, if it looks like they're going to need an extra $100,000 or $200,000 to fulfill what they wanted in their original budget goal, then potentially at that point, we could mark the budget, saying if there's any savings identified, we could potentially make that as a carryover into this budget, and get a resolution early to appropriate any savings and carryover for any shortcomings in the operating budget that we're getting ready to move into. I think that would be the way to do it, but to just have it free come back and expect it to be earmarked immediately, I don't think is the way to do it.
No, it's a request.
That makes sense.
But don't most school systems do that? No matter how much the money is, if they are over $10,000 or $10,000, they ask their city or locality, here's the money back, and can you reappropriate it back to us? Because we did, we cut, and we saved, and we stripped throughout the year, and-
But we got to look at the big picture, which includes the public works, all the other departments that may have taken heavier bits maybe than the school did. It's, that's just for instance. I think the better way is if we had a shortcoming during the budget cycle, and they reserved this building, maybe we put notice at that time instead of coming back at the end, and try to say, hey, you know, waiting to give it to us instead of giving it to public works, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, but it's, so one of the things that was drilled into me when I began into the, you know, public school finance, with the revenues before your expenditure, you do not over-spend, okay? And the only thing that sits in fund balance is this enclosures, because that is a future purchase that's taken out of the prior year's finance, okay? So it's a, I think that understanding the why the monies, you know, the revenues didn't equal the expenditures, and if it was federal, state, or understanding that will go a long ways to both boards, understanding that amount that could potentially be reappropriated. I'm 99.9% sure that it's not a standard reappropriation for general operations, it's for very specific capital outlays. I think the only operational exception is textbooks. That's the only one that I know of. They said for some reason, you know, it wasn't able to be purchased in the prior year, and it was tagged for it, and maybe because it cuts a program, and the miracle now that program is allowed to, then they're relating textbooks, which are operational, you know, that's, but typically, it's capital outlays. And I just think it's, you know, whatever's happened in the past, it just is what it is, and what's in your audited financials, it's a matter of understanding, and everybody, town finance department, school finance department, both boards, just having to, I mean, somebody explain it to you better, and help you understand it, so that everybody can do what's right and what looks right. It's not that everybody, it's not that, let me take that back, it's not that people haven't done the right thing or tried to do the right thing, it's just that there's just been a lack of, you know, counseling you guys properly, or what do you think in front of you, or, you know, explaining. Financial reports are complicated, you know, it's, you know, 50, 80, 90 pages, you know, and there's footnotes, and they're, you know, governmental accounting, it's not easy to understand. It's complex, and so I just, I hope that both boards and both finance departments can use this as an opportunity to just get right, and for whatever reason, you know, happened in the past, you know, if we're all agreed to just get it right, we'll get it right, with the help of the auditors, because they'll eventually, you know, have to review it, and we're supporting documentation to support management's assertions and statements.
Can I ask you one more question, and we hope that we'll move on from this, but wouldn't it be accurate to say, though, that the state base is funding on ADM, and we don't get it sometimes until the next year? Because the last couple years of the-
Because the last couple of years the state has not given us that funding till after our budget like in June I think or afterwards. It hadn't come in the year where it was, where the ADM was, was calculated. It's only done in March, but sometimes they, this year, I don't think they got us the month of funding until after.
Um, that's why we do the accruals. Um, so, um, it, it is a challenge because this state does a biannual, um, budget, um, somebody helping here forget if we're in the second year of biannual or beginning, beginning of biannual. Right, so it's all an estimate as well and it did get delayed until late June, the state didn't even pass their budget until late June, typically it happens a lot earlier and it, and it's easier in the second year of the biennial. So how they catch up, um, is they, um, the monies will come in in July and August that relate to the prior year and that's where the accruals are crucial, um, uh, to identifying that and, um, so, and that's why I say, you know, we, everybody involved needs to know, you know, whether federal, state, or local budget monies that didn't quite come in as expected and the picture won't be final until we find out those accruals. Um, yes.
I think the one thing that could be important for everybody to realize, uh, and was brought up early in the conversation, is that any adjustment made on the town's budget is a, as a negative. I don't care if it's a, putting a cross on a T or D or an I, it's still negative where we are reviewed for bond issuance or for borrowing money to build a school. You know, it's important that our budget is very clean and that there are no adjustments and if there needs to be an adjustment, hey, we need to put it on the school side because y'all aren't the ones that have to be borrowing money. Additionally, I think in the point on the accrual, I mean, in a nutshell, we can only spend what's appropriated. If we end up with more revenue that comes in, let's say by magic from the state or federal government, then we have to adjust the budget and we got to decide doing pre, pre-appropriation for the school for that added fund, or do we reduce the budget and take back the fund from the town? What we're always going to have is balances to do, but the key thing is we can't spend or show any more of a balance than what's appropriated at all. And that's the key thing. Once we're out of balance with appropriations, that's where all footnotes come in, is that pretty much.
Um, well, like I said, the only true restriction is schools cannot overspend. County, towns, states, and we all know there is another that, I mean, they, they can build up and then overspend and, you know, but in financial, but you have, you cannot operate on that system. So, I mean, the, the school cannot overspend, you know, that's, and then schools are a component of the over, in this case as a town, and so it's one set of financials. Schools can produce their own set of financial statements, however, they are still included as a component, we, it's like a subsidiary in a for-profit world.
Any other questions?
We'll move to the next topic, the next topic is about the elementary schools closing out and that's specific to the Apple building. Um, I think everybody's aware that we're doing new elementary schools, fantastic school. It was completed last August, I believe, before, uh, students have been in it for a year. We're looking to close that project now. Discussion?
In the, in the right now, we're waiting on the last delivery of, sorry. Okay, as of, um, a couple of days ago, we were informed that the last delivery of our schools would be based on the school on the seventeenth. And at that particular point in time, we'll be able to say that all the invoices have been received and paid and can begin to close out the project, uh, working with the finance department. So that's where we stand with that.
That's, that's good news. When do we think we look at the project file and will that be completed? So I think the last time we listened to this correctly from Long, it's, it's been a while since it's been updated, so we just want to make sure that once the seventeenth occurs that we can move on and move quickly.
Um, so what I would like to propose is that, um, the town finance department, the schools finance department, the project manager meet to close out the project, um, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page and everything's done the way it should be. I think that's the best course of action. So as soon as then the chair's arrived, we can set a date and I believe the project manager did email me a few dates that she would like to recommend, um, and so I can send those to you all and we can select from that and move forward.
That's fantastic. And there's our school board, council, and, uh, I guess, I'm running out of long. Uh, the last topic we had on, um, on our list was the, uh, Hoistman Water Power Field property. Uh, it used to be the schools, uh, the, the short history and equipment, so I wasn't here for all of it, uh, it used to be school property, uh, we were going to put it up for sale, uh, was then extending the spending to school construction from the, I have a council of bonders who's more familiar and who was actually on site during this whole process and, um, they just turn it over to you for the explanation and then we can.
Oh, thank you. Uh, just a little brief history of, uh, of the school construction shortfall there. The estimated cost, now talking some very round numbers here, the estimated cost to construct a school was nine point four million dollars and the bond was issued for eight point seven million dollars. The difference was we made up, uh, the potential sale of some school property there and go towards the construction cost, of course, you know, that never happened. And about the last two or three months of, uh, school construction, uh, we need to come up with an additional appropriation of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. I know I spent a lot of sleepless nights, you know, agony over where we're going to get the money, where the town's going to get the money to, to complete the, you know, the final stage of the school construction, playing the finding the money, um, and that was more like a, an advance on the sale of that property since the sale didn't take place. So in my view, if you give the school credit, you know, for the water tower property there would be, you know, like double payment on that. Um, and we could have set up an account receivable from the school for the seven sixty-five five and then as the property's sold, then we could credit, uh, the account receivable on the town books for that. But, uh, you know, we, we did pony up the money to complete the school construction and because we didn't, you know, the sale of the property didn't occur, so, so that's my view.
So could I add a little bit to that because I think there's a lot of misconception about this property and I don't mind anybody correcting me if I'm wrong, uh, I think maybe some people in this council may have even been involved in some of those meetings, but there was no town, a school property ever considered for sale to do anything with that loan. Um, the construction cost was going to be nine million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, I'm, I'm trying to be in the ballpark. Um, the town decided that they were going to only borrow eight point five and I know, uh, that there was also some closing costs involved in that as well as the soft cost, uh, which is the architect and some things like that, that, uh, the finance guy, the attorney's fees, the closing cost, and the town decided that they didn't want to raise taxes five cents. I think some of us were at that meeting that night, uh, when Ted Cole came here, presented on the app of Davenport, he'd done research into the town's bonds and the finances and everything and said in order for us to borrow this amount of money, which our architect had said it was going to be nine point two six five million dollars to complete this project, uh, the town for whatever reason decided that they could, uh, provide the additional funding. The school had nothing to do with that, that was a decision that was made solely by the town, but we knew going into the construction project what the cost was going to be. So when we were told what the figure was going to be at eight point five, we were also told that the only way we could do the cafeteria is that we got seven hundred and sixty-five thousand from the town and it did not, it wasn't included in that bond. So that's how that came about. So what we did, and there was an MOU that addressed it, is we said, and actually the town property didn't have anything to do with any of this initially, or the school property. Uh, the town had a building that had mold in it and needed to move immediately, the, the school board had looked at using that for the school board offices, the primary building, and we came to the town and approached them and said, we've got that bill on their second, it's second vacant and we'd like to offer that to you for your use. And after that period of time when the town moved in, the agreement was, you know, if they did any upgrades or cost anything, that that would be reimbursed to the town, but during that process and the town being there for a period of time, they decided that, um, they would like to purchase the building from us and rather than sell it. And please forgive me, Mr. Mayor Bob, I'm just speaking all idle, I don't mind this.
That's the one.
I know that, you know, it's, I could be a little bit off about this, but I'm trying to be as accurate as I can because that's been a while. Uh, so, and there was an MOU written up that said that the town would purchase that building at whatever the appraised cost was. And then at some point in time, the mayor asked us about then taking over the building. We had a discussion about the MOU and, and there was an appraisal done on the building that was, uh, they came back to around five hundred and eighty thousand. That's just that one little piece of property with the parking lot in the building, not including the rest of that tract of land, which is, I think, A, B, and the bottom part was C. So there's three different pieces of land that it was broke up into there. So, um, uh, we, we were, we had a conversation about that. I think that the county assessed it at three hundred and eighty thousand maybe and it was a discussion about somewhere meeting in the middle where the town would get the building and that piece of property and, um, the three hundred some thousand would be wiped off the books that had been there from, and it wasn't school debt from way back. And I, I did some research and I believe that, that it happened, the way I've described it was just as blue because they did sue us. I wasn't on the board then, I'm sure none of you may not have been on the council, but that debt was paid. And every year, and I remember past mayor saying, no, we're going to leave it there, even though the auditors would say you need to wipe this off the books, the town has no other way to get, the school has no way to get funds, they can never repay that, it's not how it works, and they said, we're going to leave it there anyway just so we'll always know. And that's what happened, they left it there, year after year, even at the advice of being removed by the auditor saying you need to get that off the books. And, uh, so it's always been there. So we felt this was a win-win situation for all of us. Um, the town was getting something that, you know, they wanted, we were getting that number removed and, uh, and felt that we were paying that debt back. As far as the water tower field, the way that came about to be sold is that, um, that we felt that we had an obligation to help the town if we could. It, it was never discussed, hey, y'all put the property up for sale and, and help us pay back the seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, that was never said or anything. Uh, once the town put the other piece of property up where the old school was sitting, we had a conversation with, um, with the Caldwell and decided we would sell that for capital improvements for the high school and for our property. And somehow or another from that point on, the seven hundred and sixty-five thousand came into play to where I think the town felt like, you know, maybe that should be used, you know, we'll sell this, but then those funds should be used towards the seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. The school debt is always the town, it's the taxpayer's debt, it's not the school's debt, you know that, I think we all know that. Um, so we didn't create that, we didn't create it per se, but there was some things that cha, that, that occurred initially that we wouldn't be having these conversations today if they were to follow what the finance guy stood up here and said needed to happen. He said, we could easily operate this town and operate with that five cent increase. And there was some people on council that did not want to raise taxes five cent, they raised it two cent, and then I believe the following year they didn't raise it at all. So that means that debt's climbing and there's nothing to pay it unless it comes out of reserve funds or however, you know, the town decides to pay it, so, um, so now we're at a, a different avenue now where the taxes have been raised, you know, additional money to try to allow for all this, so. I, I would hope that the school has put its best foot forward to try to help rectify some of these issues. I would hope after today that we can all agree to put this behind us one way or another because the past is the past and none of us can change it. We have the school, it's there, it belongs to the community, hopefully for many, many years after we're all gone, it'll be utilized by the community in a lot of good ways. That's our goal, is for it to be an asset to the town and not a deficit or anything else. And it is sad that we went through this process and that's why I think this meeting is such a good thing, so we can all figure out where we're at, where we want to go together. That's my goal and that's the board's goal. We have no secrets, I have nothing to hide from your finance people or your town manager. We want to be right. I can promise you, as long as I've been here for ten years, I've always said we want to do the right thing and make sure we're doing the right thing. If we're not, I want somebody to tell us and show us the right way to do it so that we can do the right thing because I came on this board for a reason, because some people weren't doing it the right way. And I'm not criticizing anybody, things happen, like the past is the past and we dealt with that and we've moved on and I hope even in your situation with what's happened in the past with past now managers or finance people, whatever, we can't change it tonight, so let's all get together and it's, it's our town. We choose to live here and I just feel like that, that we're either in it together or we're not. And I hope we all are in it together to try to make things better for all of us.
I do want to point out, the original meeting with the construction cost, we're, we're set forth, they were set forth as complete building, the alternate that you all set up in the contract after the bond and the construction budget was set up, was in case it didn't come in under that. So I don't want to refer everybody here to get the misunderstanding that the original budget was already seven hundred thousand dollars over the bond, it wasn't. And that, if the budget, you know, if it had have come in under that and we've been able to put the allowances, you know, the alternates into the job, turn to the original budget to seven sixty-five, we would have never been issued. But today, when I was at that meeting, I wasn't on council, but I was heavily involved in, in looking at those numbers and it was clear it was not nine point two or nine point three million outside at that time. I think one other comment I would like to make is one of the biggest reasons that we're having this meeting tonight, uh, it'd be from my vantage point, is I think that it's everybody's responsibility to know their job and to know what the requirements are. Now, the council, they'll all tell you that I'm a pain in the butt to them about us following the rules and not just following rules, but knowing the rules, not going along, I didn't know, so nobody told me. I think the school board's got to establish that exact same alignment, that you guys got to know the rules so that we're not the ones having to find the rules and vice versa. You know, to come in and say we didn't know or nobody told us, we can't say that either. And I think the school board has got to be just as stringent as the council in this city and I, and I, that's basically the biggest reason I ran for council was to push for us all learn the rules and follow them. Um, I just hope that going forward, we all get better at that so we don't have these kind of issues because that's basically what this whole meeting is destined for, I think.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we have a hotline here, everybody's here is calling and all for the lines, I think that's too bad for them. All right.
He's wrong.
That's all right.
I don't know, is that all?
Is it all for you?
We have an airplane circling outside.
Oh, there's water in the lines.
Oh. Good call. There you go. Awesome. Okay. So, um, a couple of things have occurred over the past year since we had a change of leadership within the town and, um, I believe, I think it's very clear this is a direct result of that change of leadership and having someone come in who is a little more, um, up to speed on finances and things like that. Uh, and so you have to be mindful, um, what I would call a hardship, this education that, that we're all getting on the school board's side, we have also gotten on our side over and over again because we didn't, we weren't doing things right for a very long time. That's why we just imposed a huge tax increase to our citizenry because we weren't doing it right. So we're trying to get it right as well and what we're doing here with you folks is a byproduct of trying to get it right across the board so that we all are on the same page. And moving forward, we don't have other councils and other school boards that would sit here and, and have this conversation, the conversation should be, always be as positive as it can be, not that this has not been a positive conversation because it has, and, um, I can't be more pleased with these proceedings today. Um, and I will tell you that, um, Mr. Trivet and Mr. Newman and myself and, uh, Quinn Robertson, our town manager, we met and we did, uh, take that three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that had been sitting on the books for ten years, that every, at least three of all its I've been in, they recommended that it needed to get off there because it was hurting our ratings and, uh, they agreed that we would get the building. Mr. Trivet asked me, when I mentioned it to him, if we could do this, he said, have it appraised, we had it appraised and the appraisal came extremely high, we all agreed on that, uh, the appraiser said there's just nothing to compare it to in this area, so they had to go to Southern Maryland, basically in some parts of King George to get like-kind appraisals. So, um, I thought that synergy in that deal was awesome, it worked out very well, I think at the end of the day, it's, it's a win-win for the community. I think at the end of the day, it's, it's a win-win for the community. Again, because this is the community's funds, no matter who, who puts side of the table it's on, it's still a community's funds. As far as the water tower property, I thought that the seven hundred sixty-five K, I've got the resolution in front of me, you probably have a copy over there too, about the sale of the properties that the, the town, that the school transferred to the town to sell. It says that the net sales proceeds will be placed in the school's construction fund till appropriated by the town council. That's what it says. So obviously, that park is, that water tower property's not gonna be sold for residential, looks like it's gonna be the Torrey Smith Park now. So the council, the way I understand it, we had our last meeting, or at least through emails, we had said that we would take what the appraised value of that property and put it towards what we felt was owed to us in the seven sixty-five K. So let's save five hundred thousand dollars and the school would still owe seven, two hundred sixty-five thousand. So as another piece of property was sold, and that, we take the extrapolate the two hundred sixty-five thousand from that, and then that debt would be cleared. Construction cost debt would be cleared from the school. Any other properties moving forward would be done the way they were intended, which was, I think, ten percent for the school, five percent for the fire department, five percent for the rescue squad. So that's the way I understood it. There were some questions about whether or not this council, I just wanna tell you guys this, because I don't want anybody to know this, whether or not this council should re-appraise the property because it's now a park, it's not gonna be made residential. So it would lose a tremendous amount of value. And this council said, no, we don't wanna do that. We wanna give you as much of that money, useful money, as possible. So this has been, you know, again, I hate to say it, but it's all about communication. And, you know, if we did this more often, we wish, we wouldn't have all this, you know, text and emails, I don't hate to say it, they, they just don't tell a story. They tell a small piece of it.
They do give us a record.
They do give you a record, but the record can come after the face-to-face as well.
Always does.
Yeah, I agree. But, you know, I...
Because these problems are what come out of them, with no records.
Right. I, I just, I'm personally ecstatic to know that we're able to do this today. I really am. And I, I really am looking forward to your leadership as well and the school board, you know, we all live in the same community. Some people have kids that go to schools, you know, schools mean a tremendous, and also the community, obviously, to all of us. So I'm just glad this happened. I now wish this had happened a long time ago. It would've, you know, atmosphere would've been a lot easier to deal with. I wouldn't have been so worried about this meeting at the end of the day. But anybody else from the council? Did you have some to him?
Oh, I was just gonna agree with you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that, that that piece of property has been a recreation area of model life. And, you know, I think it's well suited for how it's gonna be used, no doubt about it. It's gonna benefit everybody instead of just ten houses, because it's ten lots, I think, or whatever. So I, I think that's, I think that's a positive thing that, that it worked out that way. And, you know, I, I don't know how this is gonna work out in the end with all this, but however it does, I think, you know, that that is a piece of property that sits in a good place and essentially located where, you know, the citizens will be able to use it for years to come.
I have a copy of the memorandum that was between town and there, it was signed in July of twenty fourteen. And it gets confusing because here with the bond associated with that memorandum, that bond, a million two sixty-three five sixty-five, that was for getting the temporary location. Okay? And the property that was referenced in that memorandum...
Can you stick up, please?
Okay, and the, did it on? Okay, and the property that is referenced in the memorandum was the site where the high school had been on, not the water tower property. Okay, so I, I know we keep talking about bonds, so that, there was a separate bond there and then with the insurance. So in essence, when the town went out and got that million two bond proceeds, it, the town gave, got the money, gave it to the school board to be able to set up the pods and get the high school going. And then when the insurance proceeds came in, the town got. So that's a separate property, separate bond, that's what that. So I'd be happy to have Kathy send this out to everybody. And the water tower property had a separate process through the school board and the town council that in essence made it a special, it's not subject to the ordinance where sale of town property gets split, fire, rescue, school and general. And the percentage is that everybody is, so I want to be clear that... I'm sorry, will we know with the CPA, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's a good point that you brought that up. And I, I think we recognize that and know that, I don't know whether any other agency will, that would wanna get five percent, but I totally understand what you're saying.
And the seven sixty-five five, we can agree to disagree over, all I see is that the budget for the school was nine point, the number that you referred to, that's the documentation that I've seen. If there were prior estimates and that was a reassessed estimate, I'm not here to discuss that. All that I can say is that that was the nine point two that was the budgeted cost of the school. The bond, I want to be clear on with the bond, the bond, the paramount was eight million six thirty. You actually got the premium, three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, okay? Now, what was given, what was available for school construction was the eight million five, eight point five, and that was...
That's exactly right.
Exactly. So because there's bond closing costs and included in the total bond proceeds was the very first principal payment of two hundred twenty-five. And we discussed this with the auditors and Stan's predecessor at the time as to how to account for that. And it was deemed that the full proceeds would go over to the school construction fund and then the two twenty-five that represented the first interest payment that the town had to make would come back to the town. They could make it, I think it was, I think it was July for the fifteenth, that they would have debt, okay? So, you know, it was good that there was a bond premium, the money sat in a SNAP account getting interest, total of about sixty thousand in interest, sixty thousand five hundred ninety-three. That, you know, that interest was additional monies that, you know, helped towards that. So the seven sixty-five five was money that were needed because the SNAP account would've run out. The SNAP account was, you know, checked. So, and then half of it came from the town's CIP fund, the fund balance, and the other half came from the town's operating fund balance, okay? So had the water tower property been sold, it was transferred October twenty sixteen, which is the same timeframe that the bond went out. If that property had been sold, there still would've been a gap to bridge, okay? I, I just wanna be careful in terms of the use of the word debt with respect to this and then, you know, giving the school board credit for it. It was, the seven sixty-five five was monies that were needed to bridge the gap between the bond proceeds and the actual costs. That's what that was. So, I mean, had the water tower property sold, there still could've been an additional three hundred thousand that would've been required. If I, if the four hundred, I'm not really sure what the appraisal number is, but I've been heard in the four hundred range. So, yeah, I think, I think everybody's whole on this. There's, you know, and I just wanted to clarify that. And I can, like I said, in the MOU, we, I have it and I wanted to make sure that we have that clarified. Because when we're talking about bond proceeds, there's been several and one, school properties, there's two properties that we're talking about. And when we get to the financials and we talk, we actually have two school construction funds. One sits the running balance from years ago and we have the current one, which is the elementary school bill, which we're gonna work to close down now. Thank you for bearing with you on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
I have a follow-up, if you're...
Okay. Mr. Trivet, would you like to adjourn your side of meeting? Do you have anything else? And we'll adjourn our side?
No, you'll recess.
Recess, excuse me.
Yeah, we'll adjourn.